This meeting in the Rolling Meadows City Council Committee of the Whole is hereby called to order. There are five items on tonight's agenda, and based on the sign-in sheet, I don't believe there's any need to do any of the jockeying of items that sometimes we do. And so, we can proceed right through, straight one through five as is printed on the agenda. Number one is South Bay Partners. Anybody who's been reading the newspaper today already has heard a little bit about them if they haven't already. Apparently, we made The Herald, and we made WBBM Radio, and we made Channel 5 News, and all the good stuff. So, apparently, there's at least a handful of folks who might be interested. So, Mr. Crumstock, is there a staff introduction first?
There is a quick staff, obviously. South Bay Partner Development Manager, Adam Arnold, will be doing a PowerPoint presentation. This is really the introduction to a process that will continue on. In the write-up, we talked about that they would be back in February for concepts and a whole bunch of other things. This is now moved to the March Committee Hall meeting. So, again, it's about a 60-day difference from what we talked about, so from 30 to 60 now. But by that time, they'll come back with the concepts and additional items. In the write-up, we talk about some of their additional processes and buildings, Lincolnwood, which is obviously already approved, which is not under construction at this point in time. So, before Adam comes up, in the write-up, I did mention one thing that I do want to make the footnote on. And the note is that the city of Rolling Meadows did receive from Clark Street, BBC Kirchhoff Road Incorporated, the amount of $720,000 per city Resolution 12R95 that was approved back on October 23rd of 2012. And at the January 26th meeting next week, we will have a city council resolution before you that actually accepts that money, and then we have to turn that over to Cook County, and they will be doing the dispersment to all the property tax entities. So, with that, I want to bring up Adam Arnold to do this introduction.
Mr. Arnold, welcome to the council chamber.
Thank you guys for having us. So, I'm Adam Arnold. I'm with South Bay Partners. PowerPoint that we put together tonight is a quick introduction of who we are, our concept, how it applies to the site. We'll talk about who our local team here is, that we've worked with for a number of projects throughout the area, talk about the site and the overview, and then what kind of design and zoning considerations we'll need. We've done some studies for similar projects that I think are going to be applicable for Rolling Meadows as well, so I think you'll find some interest there. First thing I wanted to do, South Bay is a senior housing developer. And when you say senior housing, means a lot of different things to a lot of different folks, so maybe some quick definitions will get us started. Independent living, assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing captures pretty much the bulk of it. You'll see in the graphic there, there's a lot of different terminology that falls into the spectrum. Independent living is a component of senior living. These folks are making an election to live in an apartment-style community with services. It's an election. I want to be among my peers. I want to take advantage of not mowing and snowblowing my yard anymore. I want to take advantage of the social capacities, the dining options, et cetera, that exist inside of a community. Assisted living is a separate component. These are folks who will need assistance with activities of daily living. And that is anything as simple as getting dressed, I may need a little help eating, I may need medication reminders, and maybe one or two of those things, all the way up through folks who need a lot of help with the tasks of daily living. Memory care essentially boils down to Alzheimer's residents, those folks who need help with all manner of daily living, their memory has begun to regress. It's a very different kind of resident and care level. And then, there is skilled nursing and rehabilitation. This is not something that we do, but these are your nursing homes. So, what we will propose for Rolling Meadows is an independent living, assisted living, and memory care building. There's different kinds of payment types and ownership options that go into senior living. You'll hear terms like buy-in and CCRC. These have an upfront cost. In order for residents to move in there, usually, it's pretty hefty. In the Chicagoland area, you'll see 150,000, 350,000-type buy-ins into these communities. It guarantees a continuum of care throughout the life of, throughout the remaining life for a resident. So, if I buy into an independent living section, I am guaranteed that all of these functions of care are guaranteed throughout the life, throughout the balance of my life. There's market rate, which is a, it's a month-to-month rental. This is what we will be. I pay a monthly fee to live in the independent living, or assisted living, or memory care portion of what we're proposing in Rolling Meadows. Then, there's Medicare and Medicaid options, obviously reimbursable. And then, affordable, affordable living is exactly what it is. It's subsidized housing for senior living. Ours, again, being a market-rate community, it's that, what we consider our ideal between the hefty buy-in, the large upfront costs, and we don't do the affordable housing portion of it. It's, the market rate is our sweet spot. Again, the graphic takes into consideration a lot of different terminology you'll hear there, but for our discussion, for our purposes, we'll have an independent living component, an assisted living component, and a memory care, Alzheimer's care component, and we are a fair-market rental rate-type structure. Project overview, this is more or less the early concept of the footprint that we'd be looking at. The stick-shift orientation, if you will, piece to the left is the independent living, first floor. It shows parking to the planned south side of it, units to the, to the north, grand entry there in that middle piece with shared services through the middle corridor. The more-square rectangular piece is the memory care on the first floor. Second, third, and possibly fourth floors would be the assisted living above the memory care section. Features and amenities to our type of building, multiple dining options. There'll be a main dining room that's kind of the heart and core of the building, bistro dining, a bar, a lounge, each kind of giving a separate dining option for dinner, lunch, breakfast throughout the day, surrounded by patios and courtyards, living areas, social centers. There'll be social programming throughout the week and throughout the day, especially for the assisted and independent living. So, it's a, it's a senior center, and it's not just a resident. This is where I participate and live with my peers. Exercise facilities, this layout has a, has a pool. We want to be connected to the community with those pedestrian connectors, not just around the building, but into and throughout the community as well. That's, that's kind of our building. The players who will be working with us on our team, South Bay Partners is who I am or who we are. We're a 22-year-old company. We've done nothing but senior living for those 22 years. Everything we've done from standalone memory care, like the Vernon Hills project that is referenced in the, in the pre-write-up, on up to a large campus like we're proposing here, like is also referenced in the Lincolnwood project. Jensen Halsted is the architect for this project and has been our architect in the Chicagoland area. We've done 16, 17 different projects with them in the area. Mackey Consulting Engineers will be our civil on this. I think you guys are familiar with them. Daniel Weinbach Partners will be the landscape architect there. Charles Hall Construction will be the construction, the GC, and our consulting, construction consultant in the pre-development portion. This will be our 15th or 16th different project with Chuck Hall and his team. Kirchhoff Road, there's, there's several different addresses that I've found that have gone with the site. 2995, I think, is the one that was most recent. I believe that may have been the Dominics address. There's several that have gone along with the site, so I think we're, you tell us what we need to be, once it's, you know, assuming we would get that far. But it sits between retail center and the Taco Bell there on the hard corner, there on the southeast corner of Meadow and Kirchhoff. It's our understanding that to get through the, get through and back to you guys through planning and zoning, that we'll need a text amendment, a PUD submission, and rezoning consideration. What we'll want feedback on from you guys, and I don't know if that's today, or if we start a discussion ongoing, what that building needs to look like. We understand some structural considerations, you know, whether those need to be wood frame, I believe it's steel-framed, actually, non-combustible steel structure. You know, we'll be interested in knowing, making sure we understand what our building heights are, how that matches the community, whether this can be a three- or four-story building, and then what different considerations, and then building exteriors as well. How do we best fit in with the community, what needs to be considered there? The term neo-traditional architecture has been given to us, and we want to make sure our understanding of that is commensurate with what you guys are expecting here in the neighborhood. Civil considerations, you know, we are a residential community. Our folks will be pedestrian as best they can be, so we want to have walkways for them, not just around the building, but tied to the community as well. So, we want to be able to, for our folks to walk around the building, and to walk out into the community, and the community to be able to walk in and through ours as well. It's a, it's a vertical building, but it is, you know, we want it to be pedestrian-friendly, like a single-family development would be pedestrian-friendly as well and tied to the community as well. Stormwater is going to be something we'll need to consider, you know, if there's, you know, off-site or beyond considerations that we can tie into. We certainly like to do that. It's going to be a considerable cost of the development of this project, so if there's any kind of, if there's anything to be considered, or give-and-take relationship, we'd love to do that. It's going to be topical for this. Traffic impact studies, economic impact studies, you know, what does parking look like? Hey, Adam, hey, South Bay, how are you guys going to impact the city of Rolling Meadows? It's been very interesting, because we've always talked in narrative about how, how limit of an impact our kind of facility has on a community. We actually did, you know, put pen to paper and quantified that. And in the last project, we did the Lincoln, the Lincolnwood project. And so, our narrative that we've always discussed and felt, and felt like we knew about, was actually quantified in that. Our traffic impact study showed that really very few of our residents drive. Memory care, due to the nature of those residents, can't drive, so they, they don't own cars, they won't be parking there, they won't much be impacting the community, their visitors, their families will be. Assisted living, 20, 25% of those folks drive, get out into the community, and so that parking looks like there. And then, some, most of the independent living units will have a car tied to them, but not all of them. So, it's, it's a limited impact as far as what the, from a traffic study standpoint looks like. Economic impact study is, is very similar as well. These folks, especially the independent living, they get out and they spend their dollars in the community. So, it's, it's good from that, that standpoint. You know, these are your consumers. The retail across the street will be glad, will be glad to have them. You know, Taco Bell will be glad to have these folks there. The good part about having a seniors' community is we have zero impact on, on schools. These, these folks will not be putting any more children into the school system, so there's, there's no burden there. And emergency services is kind of the, the big one. That's the one that fire always wants to know about. How many calls are we getting? How, how much more of a drain on our system does this quantify? Really, our residents for our facilities come from the community anyway. So, while the calls are more concentrated into a senior center, what we found, or what the independent study found, is that for the most part, it's the same number of calls within the community, they're just there at this facility now. Increased tax base from consumer ability. Employment jumps up a little bit. We will be creating some jobs. It's not an overwhelming number, but there are some nurses and caregivers and staff members that will be part of the building. So, employment's a bit of a plus, but it's, it's a bit of a plus. Parking analysis, we've, your requirements in the city are very similar to what we find our building needs. So, kind of that ratio I was talking about before, memory care doesn't need them, assisted living, there'll be some, some portion of those who will have a car, need a car, full-time employees will all need a car, independent living folks will have some as well. And that's, that's about what the parking regulations for the city are as well.
Just kind of back to building footprint here, building elevation, proposed elevation. Said I would be quick, so hopefully, that kind of gets in or around the 10-minute mark we were looking for.
Then, are there clarification questions for Mr. Arnold, which of course, might be stretched out to members of his team? You know, we're not real detail-oriented until March, but as, as they're looking for kind of a sense from us, are there clarification questions before the council discussion begins? Mr. Pranin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's approximately 11 and 1/2 acres out there. How many acres will this project take up? What are you looking to take up?
It's a, it's a large footprint of the site, so I don't know that I can quantify that. Jensen Halsted quantify that yet.
Are you talking for the building itself, or how much of the site are we going to be using, in all, including parking?
What I'm looking at is if this was something that was feasible, is there any room for retail on that spot? Or are you taking the whole thing over, and that's it?
The building will take up the spot, and will take up the site.
So, there'll be no room for retail?
That's correct.
And then, I just had a thought. Don't we have a, like, nice lot across the street if they want to do some senior housing that the city owns? I mean, we, we could probably make a, arrange something, put that back in the...
It's smaller, but yes, there is one.
There is something across the street. And I guess my final thought is, as I listen to this, this basically takes away downtown. In other words, that section of it, once it's gone, it's gone, it's not coming back. So, I look at cities like, you know, Schaumburg, Elk Grove, Buffalo Grove, that are spending money to try and develop downtown areas. And I know this has been a hole for a long time, and I'd love to see something developed there. If you came up with a plan that said, "I'll take 10% of it for senior living and see what we can do to develop the rest in retail," I might have some support. But I'm just giving you a heads-up right now, I am not interested in losing that part of downtown. Just as the mayor always says, signal ahead of time, I'm signaling.
Further clarification questions on the presentation? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know now is probably premature, but you will come back with an estimated EAV to what the project's going to produce. And when you've, you know, I know that a number of years ago, apartments were taxed at a different rate, but now they've been dropped down to the AV of 16%, which is what houses, single-family homes is. How do you base, how was your, your project based in Lincoln Park, or wherever you did it, Lincolnwood? You know, do you use a reverse rent ratio, or how do you determine? You know, so you have a market rate, if an apartment rents for $1,800, you know, how do you figure out where the AV is on that?
What we'll do is the independent study on that, and just be able to put numbers to it. I don't know that I can run a calculation for you right now.
No, I don't expect that. I'm curious what you did for Lincoln, Lincolnwood. How, how did they figure the AV?
I'll be honest, I don't recall.
Okay. You can bring that back, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Because, you know, I'm, I'm not a fan of rental projects. I was adamantly opposed to the one before. I, I do understand that something's better than nothing in there, but I think if we're going to make a conscious decision to switch to residential, I'm not saying it should or shouldn't, I'm just saying if we're going to make a conscious decision to switch to residential, we need to look at the tax base. So, if you're going to put in, I believe I saw somewhere roughly 300?
Correct.
You know, I would be interested in knowing what comparison would be to 300-row homes/townhouses and condos, you know, and what they would do, you know, if they were sold. Because I mean, if all of a sudden, you know, you're going to say, "Okay, our EAV's 2.3 million, but the AV of residential being sold is 5.6," I mean, that's a significant difference for the taxes and bodies. Yeah, there will be some additional students and whatnot, but that'll be paid for. You know, I do also understand what you were saying about having, that the residents would come from the community, but that doesn't necessarily negate fire calls.
Correct.
It did also, it might concentrate them, but what it also does is it gives a whole another number of people, you know, that are living in homes. So, the fire calls are essentially going to go up in this project. You know, if you can give us an idea of what it will be, you know, not necessarily, you know, it's going to be difficult to quantify, because you don't know how many they're going to take away, and there's no guarantee that they're going to be sold to residents of Rolling Meadows only. So, we could have a whole group of people that move in, and we end up with the same residents living where we are, and then turn around with a whole bunch of fire calls.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an interesting dynamic, and you'll see it in the study. But because there is a medical component to this, especially to the memory care and the assisted living portion of the building, there's a certain amount of decrease in calls because healthcare is actually on-site.
But will there be a need to transport to hospitals?
Like anybody, of course.
If you could give us an idea of what that would be?
Yeah.
Because that's going to impact, you know, what we do from a fire perspective, AKA from a taxing perspective.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, at this point in time, you know, I'm not a fan of rental, no matter how you quantify it. I've been this way for a long period of time. I, I see nothing that you've brought forward so far to cause me to change that. Yes, it takes away the Dominics and gets rid of the eyesore and all that kind of fun stuff, but, you know, it, it's a matter of time before that's going to happen anyway. So, that's just kind of where I'm at. But I don't think anybody knows that that's not where I'm at, so, thanks.
Further questions for Mr. Arnold or his team? All right, then, they certainly can crop up during discussions, so, you know, don't, don't wander real far.
Okay.
But then, we can move into the council discussion phase for comments, maybe directed at the kinds of things that Mr. Arnold said they're kind of looking for from us, or knowing that that can be done between now and March as well, any general comments? Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I will support this wholeheartedly. It's, it's the market moving money to an, to an area where the market was not and has not been moving money. So, this is something rather than nothing, as has been discussed. It's, I mean, take any, take any part of the presentation, it's 80 to 100 more jobs than are currently there or have been there for several years. It's, it's something being built. I mean, we hashed out the, you know, the business coming in from Gallagher doing their rebuild, and I mean, you could, you could quantify that by the construction jobs during the build-out phase. I mean, there's, there's several aspects to this that'll, that'll be a positive, and I, I just have no problem with, with this regardless, because I've had so many people over the course of these last five years ask me, you know, "What are we going to do about downtown?" And I'm adamantly opposed to government being the central planning arm and dictating terms on, on parcels around town when I think the market should be doing that. So, if the market's moving in this way, and all that's standing in the way is a text amendment, I will be supporting that text amendment when it comes to my vote. Thank you.
Seeing none of that, Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to let you know my position, I'm similar to what two of the other aldermen talked about. I'm really not interested in rental property down there. Fortunately or unfortunately in my life, my father-in-law was in a number of these type of facilities the last year. He was in the moorings for a while, he was in Lutheran Home for a while. And I guess I would question the comment that EMS services won't be used more, more deeply than they are right now. In his case, when he lived at Lutheran Home, I would say from the little, that probably met 20 or 30 people there, 99% of them did not live in Arlington Heights, they came from other communities. My concern is that I would think that if we approve this thing, I see the city as becoming a net tax loser on this deal, because I think if we approve this, the next thing we need to do is approve a new ambulance for Chief Franksgroth and hire a couple more fire guys, because I can tell you from my own experience, we'll need them. My father-in-law was transported to Northwest Community Hospital four times this last calendar year, and he was not unique over in his facility. And it's a lot bigger facility than, than this one, but it's still, I think EMS is a huge concern here. And the other aspect is I'm not really interested in rental properties. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Pranin?
Just what I've come forward with, and I had come forward with before, and, you know, the rental properties, the EMS, though those are all parts of the component, and again, I understand what Mr. Baner is saying, because when this hit the paper this morning, I had people calling me, and I said, "Well, we'll see how the process goes." But I... But I really, really believe that we should do something that still keeps downtown area, because if, once this goes, it's gone and we can never bring it back. Thank you.
Mr. Veenbusch?
I'm interested in going forward and listening to more of what you have to say, and I understand what you're doing. I'd like to understand a little bit about how you ended up with this type of property, and what's the marketing focus of how you ended up with Rolling Meadows and Y.S. versus, you know, wherever else. I'd like to hear more about that, so I've got an open mind.
Mr. DeEstes?
Yeah, I'd say I have an open mind, too. I'd like to hear more.
With nobody else jumping into the mic, I would say that I also count myself as somebody who's very willing to take a look at this. I certainly agree with, I think, a whole lot of folks around town that everybody wants this to stay commercial. I think if that were something that was working, was on the horizon, was even something in the hopper somewhere, maybe we would talk a little different. But, you know, I don't know if Mr. Baner was trying to get me on his side with all his econ talk, but pretty much that's, I have a test question that I give kids in the supply and the demand unit that references when markets are shaking people by the collar and saying, "This is what you got to do," digging in your heels and saying, "I'd rather see it be this." That's just not the way it's going. We've waited quite a long time. We've had people who were not-so-good owners before. We've had people that I think have been good owners, beating the bushes, trying to drum up whatever they can. It's not coming. And so I think that if we have to shift away, which I believe is probably the smarter choice at this point in time, the next question should be, is it something that's short-sighted, or is it something that's looking toward the longer term? I don't think there's any disputing that senior living issues are going to be prevalent in this country for the next few decades. And so I don't think that it's anything that's flash in the pan in and out, or anything else along those lines. So I would count myself among those who are willing to see what comes forward, and as stuff comes forward, would be willing to look at the text amendment to make the change necessary, just because my heart is with everybody who wants to hold out, and my head is saying, "How many years is it going to be empty before we finally recognize what's going on there?" My thoughts. Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't necessarily disagree with your comments. I'm just saying that if we're, you know, if we've, I've stated before, if the market says X, the market knows. So if the market's saying it's not going to be retail, there's not much we can do about that. I agree. All I'm saying is that if that's the case, and we're going to switch it to residential, we should explore all residential options, and we would want to bring the most revenue to the city. That's all I'm saying, and I don't know how many people have possibly looked in the past. I heard Lexington was interested in purchasing it. I don't know whatever happened to that deal, but, you know, they were told, my understanding was, they were told that, you know, "We want to keep it retail." So there might be a lot of other entities interested in, you know, if we're going to make the move to residential, you know, going residential and being owner-occupied versus rental. I think that makes a significant difference. I'm not disagreeing that, you know, yeah, we'd love to all keep it in commercial, but if we can't, we can't. Now the question is, is what's the next best avenue for the city to go for the long term, which is, you know, owner-occupied? So that's my, that's where I'm coming from. I mean, it's, you know, what it is is what it is. Nobody's, you know, Clark Street's worked for how long to get it taken? Nobody's taken it. That's fine. But does that mean we jump to the very next thing, which is rental, which has been a history of not paying taxes at the level that owner-occupied do? So, thank you.
Understood. The only thing I would disagree with is the characterization that it's jumping to just the next thing. I think Clark Street's experience, going back to at least 2014, shows that I don't believe it's a fair characterization to say jumping at the first thing. There's been a lot of stuff that has gone into the hopper and hasn't panned out, and other things that went into the hopper and haven't panned out. And so as long as I think the thing is characterized fairly with that, I don't disagree with Alderman Judd's comments. I just, I just am in a different place. Mr. Baner?
Thank you. Also, I'm not, I'm not being quite as analytical as Alderman Judd in terms of what's the best deal for the city, because I don't feel I want to play that role in terms of getting offers lined up. I would like to point out, and I'll see if Barry can forward this thing he sent back, gosh, Barry, it's been late 2014, actually. "How do you address your aging population?" is the title. I'm not hawking memory care facilities, but I will say, just having visited one this past weekend in St. Louis, check out those numbers of people who are going to be specifically suffering from Alzheimer's in the next, I want to say there's a 2025 date and a 2050 date, and it's bajillions. So they're in business that's growing sadly, and I tend not to analyze, again, the market's going to determine what's there. It looks like it, we've seen what, where that particular parcel is going, but we just scratched the surface of, you know, where and why, and those are topics that we also should be interested in, I think, as members of the council. So if I can give that link to Barry, or he can probably find it in his sent mail, but again, more educated we are the better. Thank you.
I would certainly agree that there's a certain presumption of what we get to say that varies from person to person, and I tend to fall where Mr. Baner does. When somebody comes asking for a handout to build their development, then the city gets a certain amount of, "Okay, well, then we get to call some of the shots." When something of city assistance is needed, then the city gets to say, in exchange for that, we get to say how we want some things. In the case of a rezoning, which is done all over the place, I really don't think just a text amendment puts us in the driver's seat in terms of getting to choose. It's the people who own it and the people who want to buy it. That's the downside of property rights in this country. And so for those who kind of want to make other people's money do what they wish it would, I personally don't think that's our role. Mr. DeEstes? Sorry, thought you were going for the mic earlier. Any further comments on item one? Mr. Veenbusch?
I'd just make a quick comment. Both my parents were in assisted living, and my father died of Alzheimer's, and I was in deep gratitude to the assisted living facility that was down in Lila, Illinois, that I drove every weekend to see my parents, and they were well-taken care of, aging population. You can call it rental if you want, but I can tell you, when my father passed away, and my mother, there was someone right behind him to take the room that they just gave up. In fact, it was amazing, quite frankly. So populations aging, we keep talking about our citizens and how we, we're all aging, and what we can offer, what we can't offer. We've got a manure care down the street. We've got a credible hospital, Northwest Community Hospital. So I kind of set up my question to you, but I can kind of understand a little bit, you know, why these things go on. And you're absolutely right, though. You know, there were ambulances there, a lot, and there is somewhat of a burden on this city to do that. You know what? Many of us may end up in these places ourselves, and there'll be more and more of these facilities, I think, that are going to be coming up, and, you know, Rolling Meadows or not, there's probably going to be somewhere soon. And that's all I've got to say.
Further comments on item one? Then seeing none, that'll close item one. All the gentlemen who showed up, thank you for taking the time to come out. I assume we'll probably see some of you again as the process continues, at least through March, depending on how things at the council table go. Then we'll move to item two, which will bring the chief moving forward, as I see. Mr. Cannon had asked a little while ago, so whatever happened to this? And so I believe this item is in, in response to that question. As the write-up shows, they're going to be back again next month anyway, but it was a perfectly legitimate question to ask, "Where is that?" Because we haven't heard for a while, and so staff has complained with the request. Chief Fransgroth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Rooney. We did solicit requests for qualifications for proposals. We did get seven firms that submitted, and we are going to be interviewing four firms next Monday and Tuesday, I believe it is, January 25th and 26th. So we do expect to come back at the committee of the whole meeting, February 16th, I believe it is, and hopefully we will be presenting you then with a recommendation, and that's from staff's ad hoc committee that we put together, evaluated the proposals, then we opened their price proposals, and then decided to interview four of the firms, and hopefully we'll be bringing you a recommendation for project management services at the next council meeting to move forward. And then after that, we'd be looking to put together a timeline and then address, hopefully sooner rather than later, the funding question, you know, of how we're going to fund these projects, and, you know, that'll tie in with the timeline. So that's really all I have right now, a brief report, but I'll be willing to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, and I appreciate the document that went out to the companies being placed in as part of the packet, too, for the council to look at and kind of see what went out to these folks and put in. That is also a helpful piece of information that makes this item worthwhile, I believe. Are there comments or questions for the chief? Mr. Judd?
Thank you for that. Just one question. We had talked when we originally, this originally came up, that how the charging was going to be? In other words, we were questioning, was it going to be, you know, they're going to give us an all-in X, or they were going to mark up things accordingly, you know? What have you found from the people that have come forward? You know, is it kind of all over the place, or is it every which way, or?
Yes. Which is one of the reasons we're interviewing the firms then, to kind of, to narrow that and make sure we're comparing apples to apples, because, you know, the process we followed was to look at their qualifications, first of all, and make a rating of those qualifications, which is what we did. And then that really separated the firms that we really were, wanted to look at, and then once we opened their price proposals, they weren't apples to apples. You know, some firms proposed a flat percentage, others itemized their costs down, you know, from start to finish. And again, being a multifaceted, multi-phase project, some of them included land acquisitions, some didn't. And so we then took that information, put together a template, if you will, and sent that out to those firms, and then we're going to meet with them next week then to really be able to compare the apples to apples, if you will, to, because of just what you said, so that we can see what that 2% or whatever that percentage was that they put in for their fee compares to a dollar amount on the other side, and, you know, just some discrepancies in what they were including and weren't including. So we want to really get that information and hopefully bring you a recommendation then next month.
And then the recommendation will kind of include what?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Further comments or questions on item two? Then seeing none, thank you, chief. We'll see you again next month. Item three is city software. So the diagram in the packet kind of tries to lay things out in a more visual format, some of the technicalies that Mr. Chiopetta speaks in, and all the rest of the people who are in the IT world. So we're going to flick over to another PowerPoint, it looks like? Is that, is that what we're hoping to do?
Mr. Mayor, my only request is you speak slowly, because I still write in cursive.
Well, fair enough. Yeah. As somebody who works in a classroom, I can tell you, I wonder how long cursive is going to still last in the, in the real world out there.
How long is writing going to last?
Well...
It's all tight.
That's a point all on its own, but I got to say, I'm ashamed to say, I've actually considered starting to print myself, because I have numbers of kids who say they can't read cursive, so. How's that for the Johnny Carson golf swing while we kind of wait for everything to be worked out, Mr. Chiopetta? Is that good?
Really good.
All right, then the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here tonight to present the City Enterprise Resource Planning Software Project, or ERP Project to be shortened. First off, what is an ERP? Well, this graphic shows at a very high level the general idea of an ERP. It basically takes a lot of different, you know, service or software and modules and combines them into one centralized database that employees would be able to access to input, input information and also get information out of. It makes it easy because it's all in one spot, and you don't have to go in separate pieces of software to get a complete picture of your information. Our current system is over 10 years old and is rather outdated. The data is in multiple different locations, different softwares, modules. Some of those are not linked up, so it sometimes is difficult to pull data out of all those programs and present it as a whole. The current software does not integrate well with other systems and software. Sometimes there's software we'd like to, you know, connect to it and try to get information out of or put information into, and since it's so old and the age of the software, it's rather difficult and/or expensive to undertake. The support from the software manufacturer, staff finds lacking. That's one area that when we do, you know, eventually go to a different software, we'd like to see that improved. And the reporting tools are difficult to use and don't export into other applications very easily, one being spreadsheets, that's a major one. And with all ERP software nowadays, that's, that's pretty much standard. Moving on to the goals of the project, the first one is to improve service to the city's residents. This can be done with workflow improvements through software, enhanced financial reporting, and a potential resident web portal to get information about their bills and et cetera. Another goal is to consolidate as many systems as possible. This will allow us to migrate away from custom software and kind of consolidate different software packages, and this will streamline the business processes as well. Lastly, gain the ability to perform more robust reporting. You're able to pull more data from a large database than a small one, obviously. You get better reporting tools with the newer software. It gives you more robust, you know, reports and information for management, and you also have the ability to report or export to spreadsheet programs, as I mentioned before. Staff recommendation? Staff recommends to proceed with a project management consultant for the ERP project. Benefits of hiring a consultant to run the project are that they can assess and evaluate the city's current software setup and develop a plan that fits the city's environment. They can also ensure that the capital investment provides the highest level of reliability, customer service, and cost savings. They can offer project management and implementation services, and they can also review the overall ERP contract and hopefully closing loopholes that may have a financial impact down the road. Staff requests council approval to proceed with a request for proposal for the project and the project management consultant. Results obviously be brought back before council, for council approval at a future council city meeting. And a few bits of information about the project. Staff will create an internal city software committee, and this committee will assist in the evaluation and the implementation of the project, along with the consultant. And the project length is estimated to be at about two to three years. It is a very large project, so it will span multiple years. The project is shown as a three-year project in the capital improvements program. It's budgeted for $250,000 in this fiscal year, and the estimated total investment is $750,000 over the three-year project. And that can vary depending on which software, what modules you get, and so on. Are there any questions? Is there myself or Melissa?
And as far as questions go, you noticed that Ms. Gallagher's name is on the slide, too. Those bubbles are very heavily finance-oriented, so they can be questions for either of our fine staff members. Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Justin, I was wondering, is it safe to assume we won't have to make any hardware upgrades along with this? Do we have enough hardware on board already?
Yes, yes. The purchases of the CN, that's where we put the actual software on, that could facilitate the hardware portion.
You got a question I have. Thanks for your Thanks for your budget numbers. Does that include the consultant also, the $250 a year?
It could.
Okay, I have no idea what they charge, so I don't know if that's part of the deal or not.
Yeah, I mean, we could roll that in there.
Okay.
Mr. Crumstock?
Part of when we were developing some of this is, obviously, Justin's been here since 2014, and obviously, a few of us have been here longer than that. But we've been watching municipalities go through some of this process, and living through the SEI to MSI Harris process, it was an interesting curve, and that was over 10 years ago. But we get smarter, faster, quicker on a lot of these different things, and the good thing about it is, you heard that there's going to be a committee together, because even with a consultant, you have to make sure that the users are going to be comfortable with any of those kind of pieces that come in there, and each module has its own nuances. But again, part of the process is to bring someone else in who has already gone through some of this, or has other outside feelings, and knows, hey, you might not have this module running 100%, maybe it starts at 10%, but down the line, you might have a use for it. And those are some of the things that we're looking at. And Justin's actually gone through a full rollout that was, I don't want to say brutal, but it was pretty long and hard. So, he's been through the process, too. So, there are certain municipalities that are going through this, they're doing their learning. Obviously, Melissa's also gone and looked at some vendors, and we hear the good and the bad about each one. So, some are good at installing, but then, they come back into what's your support light? And that's dealing with MSI Harris right now, with the support issues, that's on our mind a lot. So, those are all things that we need to work through, and I think the consultant, at the end of the day, making sure what we've asked for is what we actually get, and hopefully, that new system lasts a long time, but also gives us that flexibility to incorporate additional modules and additional efficiencies.
That's great. I guess, yeah, you have my full support. I think this is great that you're bringing this forward. I guess, the sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned. This probably dovetails a little bit about what I'm going to be talking about in a number five tonight, too, with time management. So, I didn't realize that they were both coming out at the same time, so they kind of go hand in hand. But thanks for bringing it forward. I'm excited to see it.
Thank you.
Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, is this all Microsoft-based, or is this going to be all proprietary from each individual entity?
There are a lot of different vendors, not Microsoft. There are a lot available. Some of the bigger names are New World, Tyler, BSNA, you know, and they're more focused on government.
I think we had issues with New World somewhere along the line, right?
We had New World to do some of our dispatch recording, and the revision that we had right now, they're way past that, and their product that they have, New World, which is out there, is being utilized by a lot of municipalities. So, it's a different module. We were in that beginning, and New World was rolling out for that dispatch section and record-keeping.
And so, these different modules, well, they all kind of, I know one of the things you talked about was exporting, I'm assuming is some sort of Excel, or some sort of Access spreadsheet somewhere along the line, is it, so that's all kind of Microsoft-based, correct?
Yes, and they do integrate with Microsoft products, yeah.
Okay. I guess the only question I have is, you know, I'm not opposed to this at all, because it seems to make tremendous sense, but is there any ability for us to possibly build a consortium with one of our neighbors, Palatine, or Arlington, or Schaumburg, and, you know, go at this and get a substantially better price, you know, and just have different levels? I mean, I know that's a huge thing that a lot of entities are doing. You know, somebody brought it up to me and said, that's something we should be looking at, as compared to going out and buying this, have somebody else buy it with us, and then, you know, essentially, split it up accordingly.
Good question. We have been kind of tossing that around ourselves as well, and so, we've reached out to our city auditors, and they provided a list. And so, what we're doing is seeing who is currently looking at their software improvements, and definitely reaching out to our neighbors as well. So, if there's a consortium, we will definitely go that route. It's on the list to make sure that we're making sure we do that, to combine cost and efficiencies. So, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Veenbusch?
I'd like to hear that, about that, too.
Mr. Preynan?
And I would agree with the idea of the consortium. It mentions up here that we've had this software for 10 years. I realize technology is changing rather rapidly. Is this something that you feel that would be like, I mean, I support it 100%, I think it's the way we ought to go, but is it something that like, in five years, will we need to looking at it again, or is just trying to get some idea of, you know?
Right.
Because technology is changing so rapidly.
Right, and technology changes, and they actually, with a system like this, you pay a yearly maintenance fee, and they give you all their updates, and they give you the new versions of the system. So, a system like this should last, you know, if you do keep up with the updates, and they don't kind of give up like our current vendor, you can actually have these systems run for a very long time, 10 years or so. It depends on the vendor, and how often they update, and if they don't, you know, fall off the wagon down the line.
Thank you, and I'll support it.
Thank you.
Mr. Diestis?
Does no one think 3/4 of a million dollars is a lot of money to spend? And it may only last 10 years if they don't fall off the wagon. And if they do, are we back to spending 3/4 of a million dollars in 10 more years? I'm not saying I'm against it, but that's a heck of a lot of money to spend. And I need a little bit more justification than what I'm seeing here, if I'm going to back this thing 100% and not ask a whole bunch of questions. 3/4 of a million dollars is a lot of money for me.
Further comments or questions from the council? Then, at this point, is there any objection to putting out the request for proposal? That is the particular action item requested by the staff on this item, that's need go no further than that if the council is not willing. But is there any objection to putting out the request for proposal at this time?
I do.
Fair enough. Then, if we take a straw poll, is the council ready for the straw poll? Is there anything further to be said or asked? How many people are in favor of going out with a request for proposal at this time? Please raise your hand. And those who are opposed? Fair enough. Opposition is noted, but the direction from the council is to move forward with the request for proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll move us into item four. I see Mr. Vogt making his way forward, and I'm assuming that Alderman Preynan will want to get in fairly early in this discussion as well, having dealt with the same folks. So, as we talk about South Park, and essentially, if I'm reading this right, a chance to take a project that we've been thinking about and marry it with a project that's already being thought about by the park district, and get those economies of combined projects. Is that essentially it in a nutshell, Mr. Vogt?
Very good summary and introduction at the same time. Thank you, Mayor.
Then the floor is yours, sir.
The area west of Rowling Road, south of Euclid, was incorporated into the city after most of the homes were built. It's relatively flat. It, streets do not have curb and gutter, have some storm sewers, and as we found out, having an engineering study done of that area, some of them are undersized for what the needs are. The homes, the lots in that area, do have a lot of impervious surfaces now, with garage additions, sheds, patios, and the like, in looking at these areas this past summer, as we have spent some time there. We certainly have known from several heavy rainfall events over the last several years that we've had some reports of flooding in the area, but nothing really consistent until such time as the spring after a heavy rain, when a couple of residents contacted staff, contacted Alderman Preynan in regard to that. And as we started looking into the issue, we're also made aware that the South Park, as it's called on Fremont, which is operated by the Salt Creek Park District, is looking at doing a improvement to the, considerable improvement to the recreational features of the site. And one of the things that we immediately thought of was, well, would there be any opportunities with their redevelopment to gain some stormwater detention on the site? Because, as I mentioned earlier, with the site location being built back in the 1950s and 60s, there were no stormwater detention requirements there. We also have a problem with the Euclid 53 ramp system, that the stormwater drainage system that was built back in the 60s is inefficiently operating right now, and some of the stormwater runoff does run into Theta Lane, and the park, and the like. So, that's another problem that needs to be dealt with, and we have had some discussions with IDOT and with county in that regards to trying to correct that. So, there's a lot of dynamics in the small site. Add to that, that we are looking to do a water main replacement project in that area. The streets are likely to be candidates for resurfacing in the next several years, as early as 2017, quite possibly, if we move forward with coordinating these efforts. All in all, led us to have a couple of meetings this fall with Salt Creek Park District staff, their engineers, their architects, with regards to the improvements that are proposed, and we think there's a great opportunity here to partner, if we can kind of tie all of this together. The engineering study that was done this fall indicates that of the several different options we threw at them to look at, the only one that really helps is to combine an effort to increase the size of a number of the storm sewers in that area, with developing a stormwater detention, or low area, swale area, at the north end of what's called South Park right now, to coordinate that with the park district's proposed improvements. The park district has some funding available for this, they're anxious to move forward, they've actually slowed their process down a bit, just to try to facilitate working with the city in this regard. And when we look at the price of the storm sewer improvements, the city engineers estimating that is upwards of $200,000, we said, well, whoa, we don't have that in our capital plan, we don't have that in our budget for this year. But strikingly, the project that has been in the budget both last year and this year for the Kennedy Pond spillway repair project, has been delayed a few times by the permitting processes. We're in another round, I think it's the third round, of getting some topography and studying the creek and some of the home elevations in that area, because the division, or Department of Natural Resources down in Springfield, just wants to be real sure that they're classifying that properly. It is a dam. It is still functional, although it does have a bit of a breach to it, but we think if there's any means by which we would come up with $150,000, $200,000 for storm sewer improvements on Theta, on Fremont, and in that neighborhood, in 2016, would be to recognize that that project, at best, would be a fall construction at this point, and it really wouldn't hurt us, we believe, to consider deferring that until fiscal year 2017, as the source of funding for this project. So, we're not asking for any specific council approvals tonight, other than to listen to our presentation, answer questions if you've got it, and at least, give us the opportunity to move forward with studying this, and seeing if we can make all of the components work with the Salt Creek Park District on our own projects later this year.
Mr. Crumstock?
The other item, just to mention, is that Mr. Horn is here in the back of the room. He's actually spearheading with, not in the back of the room, anyway.
He's been doing the talking with the park district staffs.
With the park district. So, it is one of his projects, because we're still communicating with him, and that's what we want to make sure, because again, we're about a year out, and that's why we're here, so.
He was in the back, Mr. Crumstock. You're right, he just moved forward when the item came up, that's all. Mr. Preynan, would you care to get in early?
Sure. This has been something that my predecessor, Alderman Allen, had been working with. The, first, I want to thank Fred and Mr. Horn for, we've had meetings on the hoods of cars in the neighborhood. That was probably one of my first residential meetings, people showing us videos of water in their basement, and discovered there was a bike path back there that was all way overgrown. I do believe, Mr. Horn, that we, there was a sewer there that had a manhole cover, but it went, it was a sewer to nowhere, right? It was just put in there, and there was drainage pipe, but it was not connected to anything.
We believe it was put in prior to the expressway being built, and disconnected at that time, and rerouted. We're not 100% sure, but there is some logic to that.
And when we were in that area, and I've been there several times, and I fielded many calls from different residents, I think Mr. Horn was the one that recognized the swale that we could do with the park district. So, these folks have been waiting for some help for a long time, and I just want to compliment Public Works of trying to put all the pieces together, because I think it'll be good for the residents, and we can save money for the city. So, that's just my comments, and just keep going, guys. Thanks.
Mr. Cannon? Kennedy Pond is his first word. Would you care to get in early?
Sure, I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, Fred, the question I would ask, so if we move forward with this, which sounds like a great idea, what's the timeframe if we did this? Would this project be done this year?
To meet the needs of the park district for their improvements to their soccer field, the basketball court that's there, the playground that's there, that basically occupies the west side, the south side of the site, that is where the efficiencies lie, because if we can construct a stormwater detention system at the north, roughly the north, frontage of South Park, as it looks at Euclid Avenue, we can make this all come together this year. To wait longer is certainly not undoable, but it's going to cost more money in restoration costs, and in coordinating all those elements. It would make a whole lot more sense for the park district, from their perspective, to do all this at one time.
So, at this point in time, is, are we splitting this 50/50, or what's the financial arrangement? How much is the whole project going to cost versus our contribution?
Haven't gotten into that specific level with the park district yet. Certainly, our viewpoint is stormwater improvements are to benefit our residents more than it is their obligation, but if they're willing to allow some of the land to be used for stormwater detention, that certainly is a contribution on their part. But in terms of specific dollars and cents, we really haven't even, you know, we've only done this concept, plan, and the study. From an engineering standpoint, we would need to thoroughly do the design for the detention on their site, and incorporate that with their plans for the remainder of the site, as well as the storm sewers on Theta and Fremont.
Okay. You know, the project makes a lot of sense. I'm not against the project. I guess I do have a concern, though, because, you know, the people that live around Kennedy Pond have hit, have raised a number of issues, which I know you two are well aware of, and it sounds like you're comfortable letting it go another year. But I just don't want it to slide off the charts, because, I mean, the people have been expecting some improvements in that water body of water for a while now, and I guess I would just ask you not just to push it aside.
It's definitely not pushed aside. We have had a number of engineering efforts done. We've had a number of communications with the Department of Natural Resources on this. The city engineers worked hard to get the dam classification, as it's called, to one that's most favorable to us. Insert punchline there. There are four different classes of dams in the state of Illinois, and we're trying to get the IDNR to be convinced that they can permit this job at the lowest class, because it really isn't a thorough, you know, through-water way type of thing. It's a spillway. It's not a dam in that sense, as we look at it. So, I think that's still going to take a few months at least, before we get to that point where we would be ready to bid, and at this point, probably the worst case would be if it is ready to go, and we get the necessary permit approvals to look at bidding that in the fall for spring 2017 construction.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not opposed to this. I mean, I'm always a fan of when we try to get things done efficiently, and that seems to be the case here. I guess the only question I would have is, I'm not super familiar with them, because I don't think we've done any, since I've been on the councils, as a special service area. Would that be something that this should be quantified as, or classified as? I don't know, but I know we've, you know, there was people on Kirchhoff that had an issue in their backyard, and they did, you probably know a lot more than I do. Would that be something that this should be considered?
I think it's a great question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, meaning, yeah, the Kirchhoff Road yeah, the Kirchhoff Road project that recently closed out was sort of similar.
Backyard flooding and didn't necessarily say for 10 years.
Sure. Mr. Voder, Mr. Crumstock, is that, is that something that's been part of the discussions yet or should be or?
The need for developing an intergovernmental agreement has been on the radar to look at it as a special service area. And I'm presuming, Alderman Judd, that you would be looking at it from the standpoint of stormwater benefit to residents, to their properties, to reduce flooding?
I guess. I'm not super familiar with them, so I don't know what the requirements are. But yes.
Because that's what we would have to look for. I think there probably are similarities to Kirchhoff Road. But, you know, there's also the public that is benefited by reducing flooding too. So I guess I'd have to consult with our city manager and city attorney to see if a special service area would be something to consider. We can certainly report that back to the council once we've looked at it more closely.
Certainly seems like a reasonable request. So yes, if you would add that to the task list, it certainly seems reasonable to me. Further comments or questions from the council? All right, then we'll call that the conclusion of item four.
Thank you. We'll move forward from there.
We'll move to the last item on tonight's agenda, which is the time management item. Alderman Cannon, I note that this is yours. Would you care to just start us right off?
Sure. I normally don't like to start out apologizing, but I've had this virus bug for about three weeks now. So there's a lot of things that I was hoping to accomplish that didn't get done. So I don't, I guess all, obviously, even if I had everything done, the questions probably need to be directed more towards Barry than me. I don't pretend to be an expert in this area. But when I first started getting into this a year ago, a lot of things came to light. And I just think it's something, especially in light of the conversation we just had, two, number three, this kind of goes hand in hand, in my opinion. You know, 85% of our budget is in personnel needs, in personnel cost. Any way we can make that more efficient, manage it better, you know, cover any possible mistakes or areas that are gray, I just think it just helps the whole city, meaning such it's a huge part of our budget. So, you know, a couple, just a couple of statements I make, you know, time management systems help organizations like us to manage their most valuable and expensive assets, the workforce. In our case, 85% of the budget is personnel. So I'm asking to consider, kind of like what Justin was saying, there's no one-time management program that covers everything. There's modules in it depending on how sophisticated or how, again, how sophisticated we want to get. There's lots of different opportunities inside there. I will tell you, well, I know for a fact that three people sit at this table all have time management systems in their company, all three of you guys. And I think it's something most modern, up-to-date businesses feel it's an integral part of what they do to make sure they keep track of all these things. So my idea is, I'd like you just to consider the concept, ask whatever questions you want. I don't have all the answers. But I guess what I'd like to have accomplished is I'd like to have Barry and Melissa bring in like Cronos or ADP to come in here and give us a presentation in a couple of months, like maybe two cows from now, to give a professional analysis of what they might be able to do to help us and give us some cost things. I really have no idea of a cost structure here. And I know that's a little bit naive, but I was also told, don't dive into this too far because you're not representing the city. So I can't, I couldn't get any kind of numbers. So a lot of it's going to depend on what modules we would buy or not buy because there's all kinds of different things you can do under this large umbrella of time management. So I guess I'm just asking for discussion. And that, my goal would be to have us bring in a professional in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Mr. Vinger?
Thank you. And like Mr. Cannon had mentioned, his topic dovetails into Justin's. And I would be more, before we brought somebody in for a cow, I would be more interested in hearing after, after we either during sending out RFPs or getting those RFPs back, we could specifically say, is there anything about this ERP setup that would provide the resources that Mr. Cannon is talking about? So before we do, before we do something that I think could be redundant, I'd like to have our RFP either include this or cover that somehow with the folks, with the project manager who are going to be taking care of that. Because the project manager might be able to bring in a compatible software or system that would do exactly what Alderman Cannon is saying. Just my thoughts. Thanks.
Mr. Crumstock?
Don't want to cut off discussion, but I just want to give some comments first. Obviously, we've talked about modules. We've talked about, obviously, throughout the years, different Aldermen and staff have had discussions about time management. We have not had mistakes and input issues. I think when you look at when our auditors are here, they're always very responsive and also very careful with any of our audit stuff. And they do look at all of our salaries, benefits, and how we calculate them, how they're done, federal, state, and also county, and how we file with some other things. So they've never, ever had an issue. They've classified us as strong in those kind of items. And the pace up for the employees right now, when it comes out every two weeks, it does show their benefit time. It does show what's screwed, what's utilized, what's in the bank. So it does show some of those things. Again, as we've mentioned with the ERP program, you know, there are things, and I can go back in when we used to have another system, 10-plus years ago, it wasn't as smart. And this one, next one should be smarter. But going back and just getting a time management, what I've seen from other municipalities that they've classified it as wasting money because of that new module, did not do what it needed to be done, then they had to hire additional people, it could be a part-timer. They've brought in consultants to deal with making sure that the auditors are still going to be satisfied how certain things are done. So it trickles down into a lot of municipalities have also abandoned it after putting an investment into it. A few municipalities that are now doing their upgrades to their ERP are actually looking at time management, seeing after they have that in, if that new module can come in and help them out on it. One municipality, they were pretty much going whole into it. After getting into Public Works, almost two years into it, they decided that's it. We've spent enough time, effort into it. They've gone back into it. Time management has a good place. It actually has benefits on it. How we have done it, and actually, the new ERP system would come in, still allows us to file for grants and actually be compatible with that. Certain other rollouts of time management, how they were programmed or anything else like that, have had situations where they didn't get the full granting because of how that information was. Our levels of checking certain things and actually making sure who's signing off on things, yes, they sometimes seem redundant, but that's why we do have a high level from our auditors on those kind of pieces. So again, staff-wise, we don't see an issue. But at the same point in time, when the ERP is actually going up, then if something else needs to be done, it's just an extra cost that municipalities have seen that becomes overbearing or what are you trying to overall look at? So again, on staff-wise, my comment is, this is something that, at this point in time, is not needed. It's got some significant drawbacks from other places that I've seen trying to do this. Not to be offensive to anybody, but how we track our time, each department and each supervisor works out at this point in time, but the new system will help us. The one thing that I would actually say is, and you've heard that in the discussion about the ERP, calendars will be a little bit easier with any new ERP. And part of that is, that's Excel or any of those kind of pieces, some of those, we still have older systems that we're utilizing. So again, a 10-year-old system with a new ERP, it will help us on certain efficiencies, not anything else. But I know that's a quick summary. I know that some other staff, if we were going to go down that ass, will have some other comments. But the staff's comment is, let us get through ERP, let us get through everything else at that point in time. But we don't see the increase in pricing. We don't see what other municipalities have invested and then dealt with. And I don't want to be sitting at a council saying that I need a body for something when I'm trying to get bodies when I can justify them for real items at this point in time. So I know it's a quick summary. I have a lot more. I'm trying to keep down with my 15 minutes. But we have further discussion. But at the same point in time, we don't see the need at this point in time.
Comments or questions from the council further? Mr. Pranow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have worked in the manufacturing area where it's, quote, "we've had time management" and "we've not had time management." And I've seen the downfalls of both. With this, I, you know, have worked very hard to learn how the city runs by going through various departments. And what I look at when I see this is, I'm concerned about the cost of bringing this up because it's going to be another program. We have no idea of what it is. There's going to be a cost to oversee it. I mean, if council would like to approve an assistant to the city manager, I'd be supporting that to help oversee all the things that are going on. And I do agree that, as I've spoken with folks that I've known in other cities, they have abandoned this program at times. So I would agree is, let's go through, you know, as Alderman Diaz has said, we're about to spend $750,000 over the next three years. Let's see what happens with that. But at this time, I don't think we need to spend the money or go forward because I think our staff does a very good job of supervising our people. And I base that on the fact of being out there and seeing how the departments work. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no further, oh, Mr. Diaz.
I just had a question. Do we know if any system like this works with our union people? I mean, can we use this for police, for fire, and for our other two unions now? I mean, because I know most of our, most of our expenses are labor, but can we use a system and use it, use it to better coordinate or schedule union folks?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know. I mean, that's where, that's where most of the city is going to right now. I mean, I wouldn't want this to help schedule 10 people that are non-union. It has to be able to work against the whole city. Does it do that?
Part of municipalities that have abandoned it is because it's not uniform and universal. And that's why some of these groups have said, oh, it can do this and that, and it can't. Because, not to be rude, but sometimes municipalities were just a strange creature. And it just becomes a little difficult for all those systems out there to work in that kind of environment. Now that you did bring up the union, it would change the work environment, and that we could not do at this point in time. We could negotiate into that point in time. But again, municipalities, the one municipality that I mentioned, after two years, they only had it running in one department in the bin because they had all other kind of issues, just trying to roll it to another department with programming. They brought in a part-time person for one thing, and then they were looking at potentially bringing in a full-time for just one other department.
Yeah, I get all that. My question was, we have a system, a system in hotels, and different hotels have different systems. But most hotels that I've worked in are non-union. So it works. I don't know if something like this works. I have no idea. So I mean, if it doesn't work, then no. But if it does work, then maybe it's something we should look into.
I think perhaps if we, if we choose to move forward in some fashion, that question should be answered as part of a next step. Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand everything that Barry said. I understand everything that Paulie Alderman have said. I guess really, from what it sounded like, at least in this, is that, you know, there's always this and that across the board. I mean, you know, what's Denver have? What's Houston have? I mean, they've got these massive systems that are built by massive companies. We might ultimately find that we just can't afford it. That's a whole different story. But, you know, these guys all have the same union issues, you know, maybe they do or maybe they don't take those union guys into consideration. I don't know. But, you know, they're massive and very complex, just like we are. And they end up with the same requirements when it comes to FSLA, you know, family medical leave, all of that stuff. And there's been some entities that have run into and been fined thousands, if not millions of dollars, because they've screwed something up somewhere. And I'm not saying that we're going to, but it's like anything else. When you have the human element in things, mistakes occur. And there's all sorts of studies out there. You know, there's a Mercer study that says X amount of this and X amount of that, and here's your cost reductions and whatnot. Again, we might ultimately find out it's not worth it from a financial perspective. I think what would be nice though is to, you know, have somebody come in and not, not on an EFP, not on an RFP or RFQ or anything, but just somebody from a major entity to be able to quantify and answer the questions that some of us are asking. And say, you know, yes, this can be, I mean, the ERP is basically a, you're going to end up with the main system, and then you're going to end up with all these different modules. So those modules could be implemented as fast or as long as it takes to implement them. So it's not, it's kind of different. So you're going to get the ERP, and then you're going to get the modules that you want. So it's, that could be added in, or it could be added out, or you could end up with this on a standalone that could be rolled into an ERP or anything like that. So there's a whole bunch of things that you can do with it. There's just so many questions and so many things that can be answered by somebody that's a lot more in the know and experiences all these things. And I'm not saying that, you know, what Barry's saying is incorrect or inaccurate. I'm just saying, I'm sure there's companies, or excuse me, entities that are running in the same situation. You know, if Palatine's looking at it, I'm sure they've talked to some of the people Barry have. I'm sure Shamber's looking at it. But when, you know, you hear about Denver and you hear about Houston doing these things, it tells me that somebody somewhere along the line has gotten through a lot of these issues. Again, maybe we're going to find out that to get through that issue, it costs us $1.8 million. Okay, that doesn't make any sense then. But if they say, we can do it all, it's already built, we can do it for $85,000, that's a different story. And, you know, I guess the question we have to ask is, you know, how much staff time is done, you know, when we break it down, that, you know, as Barry mentioned, there's redundancies. So how many people are actually touching this along the way to make sure that it's all accurate, which could be, you know, simplified, you know, when it comes to grants and whatnot, you know, garbage, we already know, for example, they go out, they pick up garbage, and then they go into different, whether it's into roads, or they work in utilities or whatever. It gives us a lot clearer pictures to what our true costs are across the entity. And some things like that, obviously, police and fire don't matter because they're obviously police and fire. But, you know, if they're in certain training or whatever, we would be able to track that much better than we do now. So I think, you know, the concept that Alderman Cannon brought up is just to have somebody come in and talk to us and give us a little bit clearer picture. And it addresses these questions. And we can ask the guy and say, listen, you know, Barry's saying that X, Y, or Z, how do you handle that? Oh, well, we're not used to that. Or we can't do that, or we can't do that. Okay, then we know. But if he says, well, this is done by X, Y, or Z, I just think it's worth exploring and seeing if it makes sense to be able to alleviate the problems, make the city more efficient, and ultimately, you know, save money. And if we find out, like I said, if it's too expensive, we say, okay, we explored it. It's not going to save the city money. Thanks, but no thanks. I think it's worth a shot. Thank you.
Mr. Veenbaas?
Yeah, Alderman Cannon, I can identify with what you are saying. And I wasn't exactly sure at the beginning when you brought the topic up, what the direction you were heading is. But having read your synopsis, which was great, I can kind of identify with where I believe you're heading. And not to put words in your mouth or mine. On that note, I've used different time management systems in the various companies that I've either worked at or managed, including the one now that I'm at where we have a union. And we use a various type of time management system. I think, I think the point is, I think, at least from my perspective, that we're trying to get across is, there are constantly new tools available out there. And if they can help you, you know, in your job or in your management to do these various things, you've just got to be open to look at them. And that's where I sit. So if there's a tool out there that can help Barry or the chief or whatever it is that we may not have explored we may not have explored, I'm always open to looking at things, however that is, without spending a lot of money towards that end. But again, it's pretty much up to Barry and his staff on how they may or may not want to use these kind of tools. But there are tools, and they, you know, and they're just available if they can help you. If they can't help you, then don't bother. But I'm just saying, let's not have our head in the sand. Let's at least open up to see what kind of tools, what kind of modules are available, and if that can help, help us in our jobs and do it better, then, then fine. If it can't, then that's fine, too.
Mr. Gallagher?
If I could just add, too, and to echo just a couple of things in, in good free form of thoughts and ideas, you know, we always were open to ideas at staff level, and I just wanted to mention just a couple of things that Mr. Crumstock had mentioned as well, is that the city relies on its internal control mechanism, meaning that we receive the highest level of audit opinion every single year from our auditors. And that is done through a system of checks and balances. When we say redundancies, that's a good thing. That would also occur on the electronic side as well. So just a couple of things, and I think what Alderman Baner mentioned was that perhaps through the ERP system review, this would be touched on. I think at this point, it might be putting something cart before the horse because of the fact that you're looking at something that might actually be integrated at some point. And I think also what Alderman Diaz has had mentioned, too, there may be some other considerations we need to keep in mind as well. So just to kind of put my two cents in as well, that I think through the ERP process, definitely keep an open mind to all of these pieces. And I don't want to step on Mr. Crumstock's toes on this point, but I think that that's a very important piece. Our current system right now is an electronic payroll system. We do everything electronically. You're always going to touch a piece of paper along the way. There's going to be some manual processes. But internal controls are the, the real mechanism behind it, as long as you've got those sound internal controls. That's what's key to any kind of processing. And I just wanted to make sure that was kind of put out there as well.
Mr. Prina, and then Mr. Beanbus?
Just, I guess I'll forward it to Melissa, is Barry touched on it, is that when we are audited, we are doing all the right things, and we have good, good marks every time when the auditors come through from everything that we do in regard to our financial records and how we deal with payroll and our employees. That's what I heard, correct?
That is correct, and with Oliver's sign-offs and who's touching that piece of paper and how far that's going.
I'm, you know, I'm good with that. I heard what Alderman Beanbus had to say and Alderman Baner. Maybe there's something to be touched on later, but since we're spending $250,000 and just keep Justin apprised of this is something we're interested, let's go forward with that. And then as they're updating the system, maybe there's a tool, as Tim has said, that they'll come across, or Barry will come across and say, hey, let's do it. But to go in this direction right now, I, I think if anyone on the council has specific questions, they should send an email to staff and maybe have staff come back with a staff report to see if we need to go forward.
Mr. Beanbus, you were next.
I just want to make another comment on that. For example, we just upgraded our website, okay? And that cost us a penny to do that. And like, for example, where I'm at now, to the website that we're using, which is, you know, services for the city, but we also added a portal for employees so they could get information, too. And it could be anything from employee handbook to benefit forms to whatever it is. But we act, we actually have to our, to our website that we show our customers that they can bring us services, orders, whatever it may be. There's various portals that we, that we add. So I'm just saying, if there's a tool out there that could help us, great. If it, if it doesn't help us, then that's fine, too. Just be open to it.
With nobody else raising their hand, I'll throw my thoughts in. I certainly believe that the intentions here are very good. I certainly agree with Alderman Beanbus. If there's a tool out there that can be used, we should use it. But the fact that it's not coming from staff in an area that's a staff area. We, we talk about policy versus administration. Policy is our world, administration is their world. This is something in the world of administration that they're not on fire about, so quite frankly, it doesn't light a fire under my butt to, to want to push things ahead forward. I worry a little bit about kind of a, an unusual process, meaning the way these things usually go, we don't bring vendors in to talk to us. And I, and I don't know why this would be a special case. What the staff does is speak with vendors, and then when they select one, they bring that vendor in to tell us what they can do for us. I think perhaps, if it's something people might consider, if the council wants to say, we want somebody to come speak to us, I would be far more interested in talking to somebody from a municipality that has put a system in that they firmly believe has done them some good, and then follow them up with somebody that Mr. Crumstock was referring to where they didn't. That seems to me to be a little bit more following a protocol in terms of, we make the laws for the city and determine the policy, then they take the ball and run with it and put it into place. This is not a law, this is not a policy. This is administration. And so since it's their baby, I lean against going forward on its own. Something that I would be open, though, to, and I wonder, Mr. Cannon, because we're going to have to do a straw poll at some point, would you consider Alderman Baner's idea of folding it into the, our, the ERP, or whatever the damn acronym is? Would you consider that a friendly suggestion, or would you consider that an alternative that would need to have a separate vote?
Well, I would consider it a friendly alternative. I guess, you know, the ERP thing, though, is not dedicated to time management.
That's correct.
It's a module. And again, I hope I didn't come across as saying that I know all about this and I have all the answers. I mean, alls I'm asking us to do, I'm not trying to tell staff how to do it. I think the staff does a great job. This is not anti-personnel. I just would like to have an open mind about maybe we could find out ways to do things better. That's, that's only where, place I'm coming from.
I, I understand, but that "we" is not "we" at this table.
Okay, that's what me.
That "we" is, no, it's not, sir.
Okay.
That "we" is them.
Okay.
That is the city as an entity.
Okay.
And, and there are reasons why it's set up that way. And so my position is, if we're going to stick our nose into their area, because I'm, I'm just, and you guys have seen it at the table, I'm just as protective of our area when I have felt that staff has proposed policy. And I have done a verbal and hopefully gentle slap on the hand and said, that's not your world. That's our world, and we get to make those decisions. And so, so fair is fair. And so what I'm trying to say is, is there a way to accommodate what you want to do without the council thinking that the council is a seven-headed city manager? Because we are not, and that's not our world. So I think, since there is something that the staff has proposed, that the council has given its green light for with this ERP process, you are exactly right that it would not be on its own in the ERP process. It would only be a part of the ERP process. But quite frankly, I can't find any justification for making it something on its own. Others could disagree, and they're free to do that with their vote. I'm just trying to lay out something that maybe people could agree on instead of, instead of a split vote that I see could be coming. Is that something that, would you prefer that we ask for the idea to stand on its own first and then to be rolled into the ERP second if it doesn't go forward? Or is it okay to just say, how many people would be in favor of rolling this into the ERP process and just go at it that way? It's, it's your preference because it's your item.
Well, I'd like to do it as a standalone.
Fair enough. That's a perfectly legitimate request. Then are there other comments or questions? Mr. Judd?
Just based on what you just said, I guess my only thought process would be two things. I actually like your idea of an entity that uses it, likes it, and says, we found it very valuable, and then one that, you know, says, it's complete garbage, because that gets away from the salesmanship of, be it Cronus or ADP or whoever.
That's kind of where I'm going.
Right. So I like that concept. I'm not super opposed to the second process that you brought up with the ERP is, I would just ask that there would be, if, if we go that route, which doesn't sound like it, but if we do, that there's some kind of date, you know, whether it's a year from now that we say, okay, we'll have an answer on the module, that module, a year from now, because we've got to do all the ERP first, you've got to get that main piece, and then, you know, so it doesn't kind of get lost in the wind that five years from now, we still haven't gotten any kind of answer. But if it's, you know, by January for, by January, by this cow, next year, we would get some sort of answer, or, you know, based on when we come out with the, because there's a whole process he's got to go through and get the proposal and get the guy and everything. So maybe it's a year from whatever date that he does that, or nine months or something. But as long as there's some kind of definitive date, I would be fine with that. I know that's probably not where we're going, but I just put my two cents in for either way.
Well, I, I think it could go, and I would hope that that would only be kind of the last resort, if it is part of the ERP proposal or, or research that we do, to not make it be a little, you know, I don't know, tag along in the process. We should know something when we implement the first step as to when they project any other steps would come in. And so I think that would, if we put it into that process, I would fully expect, like you, to see something on paper that would say, when this is in place for three months, then we're going to visit the topic of the time management, or when this is in place in six months. Something that's on paper, something that there's a commitment to, because, you know, I believe Mr. Cannon's best point was that he talked about this, and it vanished off the cow radar. And I could see very easily that if the idea is, we'll talk about that sometime in the future, that's not going to be a satisfactory answer since this wasn't really brought forward when he asked it to be brought forward. So I kind of think Alderman Baner's idea might be something that we could all live with, but I'm just saying that's what I think. Maybe not everybody agrees. Further comments or questions? I'm not seeing any at the moment. Then, like we sometimes do, kind of announce where we're going. At Mr. Cannon's request, I have absolutely no problem in saying, the idea as presented, how many people would like to see somebody come in at the March Committee of the whole meeting, some type of vendor-ish person, and tell us what can be done in the area of time management? If that does not gain a majority of the council, I'll go to, how many people would like to see this process folded into the ERP process that was approved and, or given city direction in number three? And if even that can't gain a majority, I'll go back to, is anybody listening to people from other municipalities who could come in at the March Committee of the whole meeting and kind of sort of present that way? That's my intention for how to proceed unless anybody has any other ideas. Mr. Diaz.
I think, pardon me, I think you changed my mind about the way I was going because you said, this is their stuff, and our stuff is our stuff. And all three questions say we should get into their stuff. And I kind of agree with what you just said. It's not up to us, it's up to staff to say, we think this, and here's why, and here's what we'd like. I mean, so ask your questions, but I think I'm going to go along with what you said that staff's got their business and council's got our business, and the two are set up that way for a purpose. And the three questions that you just said you're going to ask are saying, should council get in their business? And I think the answer is no.
Fair enough. I would make, in fairness, the point that having that fence dividing line, the council does still also have oversight responsibility. And if somebody is actively making the statement, I don't think staff is considering this. And as part of my oversight responsibility, I want to force them to consider it. That can be done harder or softer and could be a way somebody could legitimately look at it. But you're right, I, I don't believe that's the baseline that we operate from. I believe that the baseline is supposed to be the, what's called the policy-administration dichotomy, which every standard thing that's out there about the ways council-manager government runs talks about. Further thoughts before Mr. Prina?
Come on, quick one. So does that mean we're going to have a fourth choice?
No, I believe we're still at three.
Okay, just, I, you brought it up, I just wanted clarification. Just go slowly.
I think if all three can't get a majority of the council, then that fourth is just it by default. So there, there'd be no need to take any further votes. You bet. Any further comments or questions? Any objection or need for clarification about the votes that I'm going to ask for? Then the first one is, how many people would be in favor of the proposal as it stands in the write-up in the agenda? Please raise a hand. How many people would be in favor of, we'll call it the Baner Amendment for tonight, saying that as the ERP process goes forward, we would like this subject to be considered within it? Please raise a hand. That is three. How many folks would be in favor of hearing from people from other municipalities? My suggestion was simply one of each. Mr. Crumstock kind of said municipalities aren't really liking this, but to give the idea it's due, we should find somebody who does like it and let somebody from a couple municipalities come in and tell us about their experiences. Please raise a hand.
I vote for that, too.
Certainly, certainly. Multiple votes are allowed. Okay, then, since none of those gained a majority, there is no direction from the city council to the staff on time management. However, I guess I would say, Mr. Crumstock, I think the fact that Mr. Cannon took the time and Mr. Cannon did find friendly voices on the council, that's a bit of advice. And sometimes I think I'm doing my stuff just fine, and when my boss hints at something, I go, eh, maybe I should take another look at that. Mr. Diaz.
I didn't support any of those things, but I do like, I do think that your last comment was, there's enough friendly voices that, that we'd like staff to take a look at. That one would be like, okay, I could, it's not an official support, but I think that's a good way to go, so.
I think that's a word to the wise for anybody who is employed, yeah. All right, then I believe that concludes all five items. There is nothing else on the agenda, therefore this committee of the whole meeting is adjourned.